This time I'll take the motion to the executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor of signifying saying aye?
Aye.
Mr. Boss, if you would, certify the executive session, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving to certify, to the best of our knowledge, on the public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meetings, requirements, and only such public meeting matters, where identified in the motion to go into technical session, or discussed are considered an executive session, and they were 2.23711A1 Personnel, 2.23711A3 Activation of Real Popularity, 2.23711A7 Consultation with Legal Counsel Litigation, 2.23711A8 Consultation with Legal Counsel General.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Zach Wige.
Yes.
Mr. Boss.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Compton.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair. All right. This time, if you could, please stand for the invocation that followed by the place of faith, Mr. Zach Wige. Mr. Fletcher, if you would, please.
May I pray? I would like to thank you for the day, blessings of life. Thank you for your help and strength for the activity here. Thank you for this opportunity together in this public place and discuss the education of children of Russell County. It should guide this board and the decisions they make. Bless them. And for our teachers and our staff and our students, it should be guided them. Bless them. What's over school this evening? Christ's name I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Dr. Brand, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Do any board members have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Brand. I have an action item that I'd like to have added for the vote for the naming of the Castlewood High School with the new gym.
All right. Do I have a motion on the amendment to the agenda? Have a second? Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. None. All right. This time I'll take the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zach Wige. Do I have a second? Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose the same sign. None. The board had the opportunity to review the minutes of the previous month. If you have, I'm going to spend the reading those, and I'll take the motion to approve those as presented. Have a second? Technical difficulties. Let me know when you're ready. All right. Have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a second. Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. There are none. Dr. Brand, word recognition, please.
We need approval.
Oh, we didn't approve it? I thought we did. All right. I'll take the motion to approve the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. There are none. All right. Dr. Brand, if you would, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll ask Mr. Fletcher to take the podium because we deal with our teacher employee of the month. Recognitions for the board members.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. As chairman, members and board, it is a pleasure tonight to bring the employee of the month, teacher of the month, and the board employee of the month. So I'd like to ask those two individuals to come forward, and if the administrators of that building are there, come with them, please. That's Dustin Presley from Honaker Elementary School and Cinnamon Couch from Castlewood High School. I'll read just a little bit of parts of the nomination for these individuals. For Mr. Presley says Dustin always has a smile on his face. He never complains about any job he's asked to do. He goes above and beyond for our students. For example, we had a pre-K student who was too embarrassed to wear his glasses to school. Dustin wore his and showed the boy. Now the boy's been wearing his glasses daily. He calls Dustin his best friend. Dustin is one person you can always count on. Dustin is such an asset for our school. The students love him and he loves them. So many students do not have a positive male role model in their lives, and small acts of kindness might have had a profound effect on their lives. He goes above and beyond and does things for the students that's not required of him. And then this individual also related incident with alliances, and it's concluded by saying good talks. Congratulations, Dustin. And the teacher of the month is Cinnamon Couch from Castlewood High School. I'd like formally nominate Cinnamon Couch from the Science Department at Castlewood High School based on the following. Number one, her dedication and help during the Tech Two, Tech Three. Number two, she's a lifelong learner. She's always enrolling herself in courses to better her knowledge of her subject area. Number three, I signed a journal topic in my English classes, English classes. The topic was what teacher do you have that has a positive, that you have a positive connection with and why? Anyway, Cinnamon had the largest response. Students expressed that she makes sure she develops a relationship with each one of them, brings everyone family, and makes each class engaging in fun. Fourth reason, she serves on many committees as representative from Castlewood High School, serving as our voice to express concerns, ask questions, and remain in the loop when new information becomes available. Thank you for the time and consideration. I believe Cinnamon would be a wonderful representative of teacher of the month. Congratulations, Cinnamon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you would, ask the board members to come down and join us here in front of the podium, if you would. We have the BSBA Academic Award certificates based on the July 1 to June 30 each academic year, the events and professional development points the board members have secured. So I have certificates from the BSBA from board members that like to come down and join me here in front.
And there's different classifications based on the number of events and so forth that the members were able to attend and the role that they served in each. First one I had is for Mr. Zach Wige, the award of honor. Again, the award of honor, Mr. Brand. Award of recognition, Mr. Cook. Award of honor, Ms. Compton. Award of achievement, Mr. Collins. And award of excellence, Mr. Boss. I'm getting photographed here.
She's outside. If you would, I'll take it. Mr. Collins, if you would, go ahead and show the certificate.
Very big title.
All right. Here we go. One, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Second, please, recognition. Dr. Brand?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. We're at the student report, please.
Yes, sir. We have one school that wasn't able to provide their student report last month, so thankfully we have our representative from Honaker High School, Hannah Blankenship with us. Hannah, if you'll come forward, I'll give you the podium. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Hannah Blankenship, and I'm here tonight to update the board on what's going on at Honaker High School so far this school year. Our administration is pleased to report that enrollment has increased this year, and these new students, as well as our new eighth graders, have adjusted to their new school nicely. We just completed the second six weeks, and students are working diligently in their classes to finish the semester strong. Our juniors and seniors have been busy with PSAT, SAT, as well as ACT tests, visiting colleges, completing college applications, and making plans for their life after high school. Athletics are always a big part of the Honaker High School experience, and each of our fall teams have been very busy. The football team started this season by winning the Colbowl game against our county rivals, the Lebanon Pioneers. We started our first home game of the season with the dedication of Wayne Boss's press box. This is a nice addition to the outstanding facilities we have at E-Max Stadium and Fuller Field. Despite injuries to several players this season, the team has worked together to make the necessary adjustments as needed. A number of records were broken this season. Chandler Hubbard broke the school record for career touchdown receptions, and Trevor Dye broke the school record for career rushing yards. We currently have a five and four record and travel to Ridgeview tomorrow for the last game of the regular season. The band has always provided some enjoyable shows to spectators, as well as provide entertainment during the game. Our volleyball teams have experienced success with both the JV and varsity teams winning the Black Diamond District Championships. The varsity team is playing this evening in the first round of the Region 1D tournament play. The golf team had a good season and placed second in the Black Diamond District. Our cross-country runners placed well in the Black Diamond District meet and qualified for the Region 1D meet, which was held yesterday. The academic team started their season off in September with the tournament at Virginia Tech. In October, they won their fourth straight Russell County Tournament with Mackenzie Sykes, Cassie Atkins, and Macabel Short making the county All-Star team. Our clubs have gotten off the ground with a running start this year. FFA has seventy-four members this year attended the Fall Leadership Conference on October 28 at UVA Wise. FFA had success at the Russell and Washington County Fairs competing in tractor driving competitions and lossless judging contests. The fellowship of Christian students had a good turnout for the Global Day of Student Prayer in September. Interact met in September to organize a chapter for HHS students. The chess club has been meeting weekly to better their skills, and the media club has created the Tiger News Network, which is released monthly to the student body. In September, our Inspire Atzer School program started with numerous academic enrichment sessions for students and adults to participate in. The program currently has 225 students participants and 15 adult participants. A number of these participants visited the Bar Theatre on September 28 to see Wait Until Dark. They will be attending the International Storytelling Center on December 7 to see the Uncalled For Trio, a storyteller who resonates Christmas of it. We celebrate homecoming in May-October this year. The theme this year was Welcome to the Jungle, with our students enjoying many dress up days from May Monday to Thriller Thursday. Our parade had many creative flows from members of classes, clubs, teams, as well as community organizations. The junior and senior girls played in the Gridiron Classic on Thursday after the parade. Homecoming week concluded with an exciting win in overtime over Harley, and therefore crowning us the Black Diamond District Champions for 2019. In closing, this Friday, we will have our Veterans Day breakfast assembly to honor veterans and their families in our community. Breakfast will begin at 8:30. Each of you are invited to attend. As always, thank you for your continued support of the students, faculty, and staff at Honaker High School.
Dr. Brand, or any other? If not, we're down for the delegation on the agenda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have received contact. One individual, Mr. Barry Glenn, visiting with us from Jobbs, Virginia, graduates, discuss such in the work of Ms. Owens and our students.
Pleasure being Russell County again. My first name is Russell. I didn't pay. I was named after the county founder, but that'd be a lie. But it's, I want to thank the board, administration for supporting jobs for Virginia graduates. Sharon Owens does a phenomenal job. And we are now reporting our results a little bit differently, and you have in front of you, just for a second, our results from our class of 2018. And the reason it's the class of 2018 is we follow up for a whole year after the graduates. I'm in my 24th year running jobs for Virginia graduates. I have eight months left before I retire with Deuce County. And it has been the best thing I've done in my career because I get to meet people like Sharon, her students, that want better than themselves and want to get a good career, and that's what it's all about. So you see on this sheet that we log in the barriers to graduation. And I don't think most people understand how many barriers these kids face in today's world and in today's high schools and today's vocational schools. In spite of the barriers, you won again the 505 National Award. You can see the rate. You outperformed the state in three of the five performance metrics and exceeded all five national standards. So I want to congratulate Chairman, you. I have some awards for the superintendent. We have another excellent wooden plaque we get out. My board directors funds these, and we give one out to every school system, that school division that earns it. This year, we have 13 of our school divisions out of 22 earned the National Award. As the state, we won it again. So, Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to give this to you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And Sharon, come on up here.
This is a copy of the actual certificate, and it says, Russell County Career and Technology Center is recognized for exceeding the 505 performance outcomes stands for the class of 2018, and it was given 36 annual national training seminar in Orlando, Florida in July 2019. Congratulations. We also give this in the classroom so they can hang up to remind the kids when they come back. The whole idea is that we'll come back. It's hard to get an active campus , obviously, but we like to have some continuity. If they get back, we try to get to the signs so they can see some continuity there. So, is the principal making tonight?
I will say.
Okay. Can we get a picture, the three of us, if that's possible?
Sure.
The article about your program is on page seven of the connection that we produced. And I just, I need to tell you that your program's in good hands. I think the state is in good hands. We are endeavoring to increase from, we have 25 programs now, to go up to 102 years with some support of federal or state money, state money. We hope that'll happen, but I just think that our program is so well represented, so successful, it should be in more schools. So that's what we're trying to do. And it is an honor to be here again. Seriously. So can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
Just cut the magic camera. The way you wanted to. You get in the middle. I hold David. I don't have a good size. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Take care. Appreciate it. Thanks. I love this table.
All right, Dr. Brand, anything else on the delegation this time?
Yes, sir. We do have another delegation available at the end for those that are here tonight that would like to address the board.
All right. Thank you. All right. This time, the board had the opportunity to review the bills and accounts. Now, I'll take the motion to pay the bills and accounts as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion by the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. There are none. Dr. Brown, the approval of resignations and retirements, please.
Yes, sir. I have a small list here for the board to review and approval.
Board's had the opportunity to review those. Short order. We'll take the motion to approve those.
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have a second, please?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zach Wige. Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. There are none. Dr. Brown, the youth personnel and transfers, please.
Again, it's a small, small list, bus drivers and some aides, coaching physicians. We do have two teaching physicians that are on the agenda tonight.
Kind of looked blank on the computer here. Dr. Brand, give us a minute. All right. We've had the opportunity to review those. Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Do I have a second? Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. There are none. All right, Dr. Brown, we're at the bus financing, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have, we have two action items announced tonight. The first one deals with the financing of the buses that the board approved purchase with the FY '20 budget. Those buses have been now secured and on site. The financing process deals with payment in over a four-year window. On Thursday, the 24th, we opened the bids for that at 3:30, and with those sealed bids, we had six, for the six new buses, US Bancor Government Leasing and Finance Inc. was determined to be the low bidder with an interest rate of only 2.017 percent. It proved, Chairman, that you should sign final documents for the process, and the recommendation from the staff is to approve, the approval of said financing and approval for the chairman to finalize any associated documents.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll take the financing first. Have a motion to approve the financing on the buses. Headed presented by Dr. Brown. Thank you. Do I have a second? Any discussion by the board? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. This time I'll take the motion to allow the chairman to sign that financing as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion by the board?
Does the superintendent have to sign anything?
Not, not by not. It is Chairman's signature.
All right.
Is that a three-year lease?
It is a three. I missed that.
I thought you said four, and I thought it was three.
The previous year we had done four. We're going to do a three-year this year.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. There are none. Information?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we have a second action item from the board, from Mr. Cook.
All right. Mr. Cook, if you would, you have a motion to amend the agenda.
Yeah, and an action item to be voted on tonight. In the note, in the June board meeting, the board unanimously approved for one of the gyms at Castlewood to be named after Tom Allen. We have two, we have two gymnasiums, and we're always calling it the old and the new. And a committee was going to be set up to decide which gym would be named after Mr. Allen. It was discovered that our old gym already has been named. It is the J.E. Carter Gymnasium. There's a plaque outside, and no one really realized that. So by default, I would like to make the motion that we name the new gym after Coach Tom Allen.
Okay. That's a motion. Do I have a second? All right. Have a second. Any discussion by the board? All right. If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Pose the same sign. There are none. All right.
Mr. Chairman, we may have another action item that needs to be voted on. I think the Lebanon Band is going to take a trip in the spring, and I think it was supposed to have been brought to your attention, Dr. Brown.
Nothing's been shared with me from administration yet, sir.
Is that something I can have that we can?
I mean, the board has the pleasure of putting wherever they'd like to serve. I don't know the particulars of the event.
I think that's something that we can deal with, you know, when we know more about it. I'm sure, I'm sure board members, you know, will try to do all that we can in the future for them, but I mean, if you want to.
Well, I think they were expecting it to be voted on tonight, and I think.
Is this approval of the trip or funding?
Approval of the trip.
Oh, approval. I thought.
Yeah. No, 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 sir.
Those trips normally are just approved in my office. Was it something dramatic?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we, I think we, the board actually made that decision and gave me that latitude early on. So unless that trip is really out.
That's okay.
Where's the trip to?
New York City.
New York City. I think they have all the funding taken care of and just.
Fully funded, just wanting the blessing.
I have a question. Enjoy your drink. Y'all want to pay the board's way, too?
We even start by asking for that.
Got a seat on a couple of bus, right?
Yes. But this is more has a concern with that, Mr. Chairman, that that's a very common
trip. Orlando, New York City, Chicago, things like that are fairly common.
Didn't that come through as a field trip request anyway?
Something like that will come to me. Yes. It'll cross my desk.
Only other question about it or anything?
Things on the West Coast is a little different creature. You know, something like that I'll bring to the board if we're going to go somewhere in California or.
I think the only time we've had an issue with it was when we went out of country. There was a request to go out of country, and we.
That can be problematic.
Is that good, Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir. I just didn't, I just, if we had to vote on it, I didn't want those people to have to make another trip.
Thank you. All right. Information items, Dr. Brown?
No certain items, no.
South Texas, 376, 232, 68. You got a bit in line, as we've seen. Dr. Brand, where expenditure reports, please?
We have the maintenance as well, sir.
There was the ADM, Dr. Brown. Thirty-five, thirty-four.
Yes. And on the maintenance reports, Mr. Chairman, again, I'll share with the folks in the audience the fact that we are having some corrective actions there. For the elementary school, we have some issues with some brick that have bode, and we're in the process now of getting that secured and getting that corrected. We received documentation from OWPR that things are fine with the building. Otherwise, it's just these classrooms, there's four of them, two on the log and two on top. And we're getting ready to get that shirt up and get that taken care of, but again, no issue with the rest of the building. But again, no issue with the rest of the building.
Board have any concerns or questions regarding maintenance reports? All right, Dr. Brown, expenditure report, please.
Yes, sir, I examined that today. Everything appears to be in line and we'll be reviewing that with central office supervisors on Monday with our staff meeting.
Board have any question about the expenditure report? All right, not future agenda items, Dr. Brown?
No, sir, none this time.
All right. Delegation, none on the agenda?
What happened, turned the podium over, whoever would like to address the board?
All right. Dr. Brown, we're at the future calendar items. I think, you know, we have the conference coming up in Williamsburg. Ms. Garrett and Mr. Parsons is here, but I think we've been in the past allowed, however you want to say, to attend that. So, you know, you need to reach out to Mr. Gibson as well and make that available to them if they would like to go and give them the times and dates and so.
I actually reached out to everyone yesterday and shared that information. But yeah, we'll be leaving on the twentieth that morning. We ran into an issue with Mr. Zaguiji maybe having a responsibility earlier in the evening than we thought, so maybe it'd be eight or eight-thirty leaving so that we can accommodate that requirement. But we'll be leaving, doing that as our drive day. Unfortunately, you know, State of Virginia ends in Charlottesville as far as the DOE and the SBA and the big wigs are concerned. So we'll be driving to Williamsburg, we'll use that as a drive day. We'll get there and we'll have all day on the twenty-first, spend that night as well. And then on the twenty-second, which is Friday, we'll have a morning of activities and drive back that evening, get back six, seven, eight o'clock at evening.
All right. Any other future calendar items?
Yes, sir, I want to mention something. We received information from teachers that were unhappy with the board member that was using the internet for the school system to put political announcements on and political agenda. And I think I know about what's on that in the, in the rules on that, of records. And this policy needs to be reviewed and I say, ask this to the new school board to add that to their policy to make sure that no board member posts any political agenda on the, on the internet because it shouldn't happen. I don't know the regulation, how illegal or not illegal, but I'm just thinking we, from what I know about the regulation, we do not have that written in about any political agenda. So that needs to be looked at. And by the way, I want to congratulate the two board members that are here, new board members, Kevin Parsons and Ms. Garrett, both of them are attending right. And congratulations to our board members that are still on the board. So congratulations to you. I wish you all, you good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other future calendar items?
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank our, our elementary board here for this evening.
I agree, it's good.
And I also want to, and we'll probably be recognizing them at some point, maybe, I don't know. They were a good article in the Lebanon paper last week with the Lebanon drama. And that was absolutely fantastic. I mean, that was wonderful. And I'd like to recognize that group for their fine accomplishment.
Anything further from the board or Dr. Brown? All right, our next, our next board meeting will be December the fifth. Executive session is at five, regular meeting is at six-thirty. Before we take a motion to adjourn, I think Mr. Lewis's birthday, is that correct?
Oh, forget it.
It is.
It is.
I asked Tammy, she said thirty?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, okay. Okay, thirty, thirty-nine. She just locked the year off. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
Did anybody change for a nickel side to leave him a birthday present?
Well, I didn't know. I'd have put him on Tell 'Em Sale to get that free Bonanza dinner or something. I mean, that's wrong. You just, you just escaped me, too.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for attending. Congratulations to our new board members. I hope everything goes well and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No worries.
Have a second?
Second. Third.
Any discussion by the board?